Yeah.
Yeah, nature and virtue, right?
Yeah.
And David told me.
Yeah.
David should know, man, he's my best man, so.
You know what?
Oh, I like that.
Alan Martin. Any blackface song?
I wasn't on the tip.
Right, no, go here.
Fifteen months ago, and there hasn't been any movement on the issue of there the house is overgrown. There's the cars have parked in the weeds. There seem to be rodents running in and out. So it's kind of a health answer and other things. Um, none of the cars have been moved in quite well. So residents ask for a donation and we're usually to help. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you want to talk to us at for the meeting, I do probably have my best. Any other public comments?
Yep, question. Do we bring in Kansas to the church or?
Yes, absolutely. We can do that. Now we're there. Okay, on Tuesday, uh, and also Friday mornings, we're here from ten to eleven for prayer service. And then we have final study on Wednesday evening that starts from six to eight. And then our our pastor is on WB two three uh radio station on Thursday. He goes by for the station one. So thank you. If you have donations tonight, we graciously accept.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Moving on, we need a motion to approve payroll this number twenty nine, twenty twenty three, amount of four hundred forty thousand sixty three dollars and ninety one cents. What involved in Rita, Sacramento, and power on the question? Or please do the roll call.
Alvin Carr. Alvin Johnson.
Hi.
Alvin Rita.
Hi.
Alvin Fairwall.
Hi.
Alvin McGee.
Hi.
Bye bye, Senator.
Motion carries. Next to the motion to boot house payable dated October eleventh, twenty twenty three, amount of one point one fifty four thousand ninety dollar fourteen cents. For a manual check included for Verdoliak Law Group LLC. And Cass Davidson for two hundred twenty three thousand dollars. So motion, which involved in Baron Walt said well, the car on the question. But please do the roll call.
Alvin Carr.
Hi.
Alvin Johnson.
Hi.
Alvin Rita.
Hi.
Alvin Fairwall.
Hi.
Alvin McGee.
Hi.
Bye bye, Senator.
Carries. Next, we have see the table from a previous meeting, a resolution listed while in recount Illinois to authorize and approve the transfer incremental revenues from tip two to five. Pursuant to sixty five I L S C S five slash loving dash seventy four point four. So motion. Well, Johnson, second. Alvin Baron will on the question. But please do the roll call.
Alvin Carr.
Hi.
Alvin Johnson.
Hi.
Alvin Rita.
Hi.
Alvin Fairwall.
Hi.
Alvin McGee.
Hi.
Bye bye, Senator.
Motion carries. There's no opposition. I'd like to table D. Um, we had to send it to the next agenda for rules act, but I know we discussed putting it in the cow. So there's no objection. We'll table item D. Alvin Rita's a second. Alvin Carl, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries to table. Under E, the motion to approve landmark landmark designation for one twenty seven thirty eight South Freedom Avenue. On recommendation of the Guile Historic Preservation Commission, is there a motion? Motion rolling McGee second, Alvin Baron on the question. But please do the roll call.
Alvin Carr.
Hi.
Alvin Johnson.
Hi.
Alvin, um, Rita.
Hi.
Alvin Fairwall.
Hi.
Alvin McGee.
Hi.
Bye bye, Senator.
Motion carries and just aside comments. I started my career in politics actually being on this board at eighteen years old. And it's the first one I think we've had in quite some time. I do know I was working with Chairman Tom Mantel. There's a backlog of probably ten plaques. Of things that have been designated over the last ten years that they were never ordered. So including this one, um, once we get the language up together with the help of our rest next story and can Jelma. Uh, place an order. You'll see that be hopefully within a month or two because we did put a line item for this to be done this year. So I'm hopefully we can get them all up as soon as they come. But if there's like ten of them out there, including this one. Next, we have F. Resolution, uh, for the city of Guile, Cook County, Illinois to authorize and approve a settlement agreement relating to twenty nineteen L one oh one sixty five. Is there a motion? Motion ball in terminal second, Alvin Carr on the question. But please do the roll call.
Alvin Carr.
Hi.
Alvin Johnson.
Hi.
Alvin Rita.
Hi.
Alvin Fairwall.
Hi.
Alvin McGee.
Hi.
Bye bye, Senator.
Motion carries. Next, under G, the resolution, the city of Guile, Cook County, Illinois to authorize and approve memorandum of understanding with Metropolitan Family Services. So motion. Alvin McGee, second, Alvin Johnson, on the main. Any question? Along the ground.
Aren't that course bound a little about it? He said the only cost that would be would be, um. Some kind of an employee at the rec center. I I just wondering, is there any specific that to that or that just a eventual idea that might occur to?
The reason I said it there was a financial issue with the cost of having an employee at the rec centers. Whenever we run any type of programs on that side, we always have.
Oh, it's not like a permanent.
No.
A catch. Okay, thank you.
Have any other questions? Mark, please it up. Um, it's it's my assumption that we've done this with tax. Is it correct or is it?
Yes, with Metropolitan Family Services.
We have.
This is an expansion of.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, please do the roll.
Alvin Carr.
Hi.
Alvin Johnson.
Hi.
Alvin Rita.
Hi.
Alvin Fairwall.
Hi.
Alvin McGee.
Hi.
Bye bye, Senator.
Motion carries under mayor's comments. Um, I didn't announce this last week because I wanted to make sure I believed it and seen it myself. The new street sweeper has come in and has been on the street daily. If you haven't already seen it, you will. It's doing a lot better job than our previous one. I think the last one about ten years old, am I right? So we were ready for an upgrade and we paid for it in full, I believe, which is a good thing. The city's never had. That ability before, but it's doing a great job. And I see it almost every morning going to work. Fire truck, I believe our fire department is heading out to place the order for a secondary truck to replace one that's near twenty years old. And possibly a third truck because everything's out so far, two, three years out to order. So I know our chief is heading out, um, leave tomorrow to Wisconsin to work on the schematics of the new project. Uh, Old Western Avenue, phase one, streetscaping is progressing on time. They ran into a few, um, contingencies, like I mentioned before, with gas tanks and underground gas lines they weren't aware of. But now we're at the point where they've done all the digging. It's all done and most of the concrete's been poured. So hopefully there's no more surprises and we're on the fast track. Hope we finish that project up. Most of it, um, on time with the exception of things that are especially ordered like the light bulbs. Um, but I know they're digging out the tree pits today. They're pouring in some more concrete today. And, um, I know our architect engineer Hitchcock are working on possibly a phase one point five in preparation of phase two. Which won't happen probably the way I does been doing permits probably for two more years. But I'll keep the council appraised before, um, going further down the pipeline. Streets finally got started. They're doing a lot of saw cutting and there it looked like they're trying to tackle all of them at one time because all over the city is cutting all over the city instead of just doing one and starting and finishing it. So they assured me they're gonna try to go as fast as possible and as much as they can. However, if they don't, everything's all over works at the early break in the spring. In conjunction with Burke Engineering, trying to put together a bit for next year, which will include a lot of sewer work that we pushed off from this year. And then hopefully will be, once you have a sewer televising information all back to us, we can put together our plan for the next few years. Hopefully bid out early enough where we could start work early in the spring instead of waiting so long in the fall. And not all our fault this year because of the backlog of towns trying to do work post COVID, but I still like to not work this late in the season. Uh, green alleys did start and they're moving very quickly. They dug out completely and already working on one of the outlets are three that were chosen through M W R D grants. And they dug out a lot deeper than I thought. They went down about two to three feet in some sections and they're gonna put all the gravel and p gravel and all the rain stuff that goes along with retention of water under the. But that's been going pretty fast. Maybe once take a look at that, I'll pile on that. So that's my pretty quick update. I did talk to Trams from Burke. Once he has the sewer stuff put together, he is going to attend a future meeting hopefully very soon to give an update on multiple projects. Those ones that we've been very hesitant, certain open note are pretty of bigger projects, bigger grants that are out there. But as everything I've done last two and a half years without stuffing concrete, I don't like making public announcements. But there's some good things in the horizon regarding a W R D rain ready stuff and other grants. So hopefully be coming at the next move. See you, Corrigan.
Um, the health fair Saturday was a success. Um, scarecrows will begin work, um, this Thursday unless we have a rain delay. Day to death thing has been started. We're taking applications for everybody to do alters and vendors. We're looking for high school students that need, uh, volunteer hours. And you can reserve your application now for the spring qualifier. And I believe the park district's from retreat is October twenty eighth.
Thank you. See you, Corrigan.
Uh, no, and I'm just your comments, the mayor. If I can get, uh, motion to approve. About monthly treasures report ending end needs number thirty, twenty twenty three, motion Alvin McGee second by. Alvin Tower, any question? Please do the roll call.
Alvin Carr.
Hi.
Alvin Johnson.
Hi.
Alvin Rita.
Hi.
Alvin Fairwall.
Hi.
Alvin McGee.
Hi.
Bye bye, Senator.
Motion carries.
Yeah.
City administrator, Mark, you got it. All the manor announcing to your board's comments, Alvin Rita.
Um, I would like to invite everybody to Eisenhower High School. Actually, on behalf of Eisenhower High School, uh, they're having a Halloween spooktacular. On Wednesday, October eighteenth, from six to eight P M at the high school, one two seven zero zero, South Stanford Meadow. It's free to the public. You would enter through the, uh, doors W one or P A C entrance. Um, first one hundred and fifty children. Twelve years and younger receive a pumpkin. They asked if they wearing their costumes. There'll be arts and crafts, face painting. Trick or treating, uh, pumpkin patch and decorating, games, balloon animals. Bouncy houses and, uh, police car, blue on police car truck or tree, trunk or tree. So if anybody could spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you. Alvin Darrell.
Alvin Rita. You have flyers and something for this. Plus, uh, Alvin Rita, if you, uh, lose the application. If you send them to, uh, I have the application, if you go on the marquee, the marquee is down right now. Or the sign one one seven. Oh, I thought they are, yeah. Because it's up today. Yeah.
All right, Alvin Baron.
I just feel like I think my Schroder is public extreme for helping, uh, another tree plant in its place this week. I think forty nine trees now. Yeah. So forty nine trees went in and, uh, first in summer, a hundred and fifty is supposed to go into the next year. Uh, and again, thanks to be able to hold the.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Alvin, not with an executive. So motion to go on executive, what's involved in Johnson, second by. Alvin McGee, my question, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in the church, actually, because of the, um. To the and also findings. Your churches. In the street and some should come to church. But, but actually, if you want. Can you just see the bed? You know, I was gonna say you believe that if the church is open, someone's there, you can come inside and it's right there in the front door. If not, you know, that's something and maybe outside. The door, and that's.
We we can describe it every day for anybody else.
Yes.
Yeah. But I I didn't know if you were like looking for help. For like a giveaway or. Put some tech in a box.
But we're trying to get the items so that we can take them like that to last year's. You, but it's not as far as we can reach until we pass the term. I think that's why they took the big ones, that's why. But he's not really doing. The food, yeah. Once you give him breakfast, he's probably. And if you pass by there going toward Alaska, you'll see that sign that's up there all the time is. And also I know. Yeah, we went to Salvation Army. You know, eating and thinking following the other seniors and they named like people too. So they would collect enough people and just put it in the whole places. Which is one.
All right.
Okay, and we're having a. Cancer survivors and salvation. For friends and families as, um, probably twenty nine, as in Sunday at ten thirty in New York. Um, we have. That's our children. And that's on Sunday.
Yeah.
And the thing before that was real surgery. So if you come by there and you see it at the park, you know, the park district, yeah, you can give us loads of things. Or if not, I'll mark the church. Or we do that. And then on November, we're gonna be stretching tours. Our goal this year is to find needy families to give them to them visited.
Mm hmm.
As opposed to all the tours we took last year, I had to take them to IHOP because when I called our party, they said we don't.
Right.
Don't take them.
You know, Alvin Rita does that. What can remember the name of the. Want to say the name of the.
Interesting facts.
Yeah.
Then I'll be.
Yeah, we're thinking the same thing. You know, uh, Alvin Rita has me, but she doesn't quite.
It's the one that Judy was. Used to do, right? Yeah. She Judy.
Right.
Judy Judy, she's direct for the forum. Back in the day, and I think she had a sec, she was on my side and she started guarding.
guardian.
Yeah. Yeah. Or Angel something.
Angel, the elf, the elf, that's a movie.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
It'll touch. That's that, that's it.
That's the goal in top of the team and you don't know where they've gone, you know, who they. Do you?
Do you get names?
We don't get names. What what they do is, um, they they get a tag and they, you know, a girl. Um, age ten, you know, hard to get all. Looking for an iPod and something like that. And the officers will go grab a tab.
Oh, yes. Yeah. And sometimes I seen each time where a post office, they had children, families pregnant, mothers, and women. They got them ready and then, you know, to there. Put together some items and.
Usually the little boy.
Thank you. Mitch, was it before your Chinese?
No, I was there.
You can't, yeah. Easy right about his nails and all of the same.
Background was young, young.
It was young, young.
Yeah. Uh, there was a. If I don't think so, I can't see the parents. Come out, maybe they're. And his grandmother, she takes them. Why?
Yeah, right.
For. Ranch.
Burn something?
You know, I put them in the system. So the grandma.
Took them all in.
Took them all in, in a studio apartment. You know, she was on fixed budget. There's no food. There was no medication. The. Got together and dropped off like two, two squad full of food and load.
Yeah. Well, I don't know. You don't really have social, are you going to see you?
No.
Why?
We don't.
Guard to helping families.
Right. Well, we have Metropolitan Family Services, which we're talking about tonight, but I don't know the extent of their services.
We could just take a little more.
Uh, direct center somewhere? Might be before a month. So, yeah, I mean, there's a.
Yeah, you still have someone in this department that's helping, you know. The families that are. And then when you're closing and things like that.
No, we.
No, no, uh. There was something announced. I think Angela's for me.
Yes. So that's true, um, do you look at the name? This is my, uh, got on my, you know, it's a church in a hundred and fifth, you know, town or. Yeah, that one. And, um, they are working with, uh, the police at eleven. Monterey, you know, that police station or whatever, because they're housing a lot of the immigrants. And they're helping record meals and supplies, stuff like that. The the police station is.
Kind of like Longwood.
Yeah, just east, east of the tracks, yeah, between Longwood and, uh, yeah, for pretty long.
Correct, right.
Yeah. And that. So Angela. Matt, yeah. Angela Matthews, she's like. In Louisiana, and she's. Cause I live online.
Yeah.
No, no. Uh, that's a hundred. Obviously, yeah, they know. Between us and.
Oh, well, I I I.
And east of the rock.
You know.
Only at the address.
Was challenging, right? I'm a little experienced here in the. But it's not football. I don't.
But what you're hearing.
Coach, coach, something, right.
And there's no holes.
Players that went to the. Yeah, you know, um. I graduated in Singapore. Being a part of those.
So I, like I'm trying to. So I send her email and she sends something back. She was, she was here at the hospital meeting the other night. She said, right, I'm. Influential, thank you. I just trying to operate. Yeah, and then because I watch. My daughter's kids are growing like these, so they're just shedding. You know, in that stage of raising kids. And, um, I should learn. And I took them to the church. That's why I remember where it was at, but I'm just trying to find it. Um, one place that answers. So her name is Antwood Jackson, not. Oh. I mentioned before. Why I can't find it because. She said my name and somebody else who done in the mean and said, this is very. See if I can pull it up on Google Maps. Have any internet. You know, I I will send you, I've got your, you know. When I get that. Um, are you coming to see the class? You coming to? Once they're resigning, it's not. Congratulations. Just gonna ask you to, uh, talk about the food drive over there with the brush, but. I will give you a. So we can. I will, you know, let them know where it's at. You do get my email, so. Um, I don't. If it stands, I. Probably the party that's. That one. Yeah, but. Seven. This. Twenty second.
And Martin, they didn't move the car, which now it's still locked. And Floyd, uh, we gotta.
Other houses, uh, right.
The executives to play on first, to get motion to re convene, Alvin Johnson, Alvin McGee, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
And executive discuss litigation, uh, real estate matters. Um, and, uh, executive. Is there motion to adjourn? Alvin Baron, second, Alvin Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Um.